Well, we're not quite ready yet. We didn't start the meeting.
Okay. Kind of while we've been... We've got one meeting, so...
Yes.
Right.
Cody, when we're ready, would you let us know? Good evening. This meeting of the Coventry Town Council will now come to order at 6:01. Roll call, Ms. Ludwig?
Here.
Ms. Shockley? Mrs. Shockley?
Here.
Mrs. Lima?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc is absent. Mrs. Dixon here. Mr. Spearman, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Ready, ready, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
You may be seated. Mr. Spearman, please provide us with the emergency evacuation plan. Thank you.
Okay. Please, emergency. Who has the red? This will be a red alert. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spearman. May I have a motion from a member of the council to adjourn into executive session for the following. Per Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A12, Coventry Land Trust, presentation and discussion proposed acquisition by the land trust of the grassed property which involves the possible donation of a portion of the Boxdale property. And two, per Rhode Island General Law 4246-A2, discussion pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically for an update on Socia versus Coventry KC 2020-0769 litigation with the town solicitor. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Four yays, no nays. We are now in executive session. I'll invite members of the land trust to follow us into the executive session room. Thank you.
I like this. Oh, it spins. I'm operating today. Oh, look, it's on it.
Okay, good. Good evening everyone.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure having you all with us. Thank you for being so patient and waiting for us. We have a very busy executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn from the executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon? Yes. Four yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon? Yes. Four yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you. The Town Council met in executive session for the following. For Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A12, the Coventry Land Trust presentation and discussion, proposed acquisition by the Land Trust of the Grasset property, which involves the possible donation of a portion of the Boxdale property. A discussion took place, no votes were taken. The council does support the Land Trust pursuing acquisition and donation of these properties. Second item, Rhode Island General Law 4246-A2, discussion pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, specifically for an update on Socia versus Coventry KC 2020-0769 litigation with the town solicitor. A discussion took place, no votes were taken. Up to agenda item number B2, approval of Town Council meetings for April 27th, 2021, May 3rd, 2021, and May 5th, 2021. Madam Clerk, did you receive any corrections for each of these meetings?
I did just receive yours for April 27th. There was a correction and then the May 3rd. There was a couple.
Okay, thank you. Have the corrections been made?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Council members, anyone wish to make an additional comment about the minutes? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the amended corrections for April 27th and is it May 3rd that were corrections?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the amended corrections for April 27th and May 3rd?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. Thank you. Roll call, vote. Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon? Yes. Four yeas, no nays, the amended minutes are approved. Now, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for May 5th?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, vote. Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon? Yes. Four yeas, no nays, the motion to approve the minutes for May 5th have been approved. Passed. Thank you. We are now on item B3, proclamation recognizing the Coventry High School athletes. Ms. Shockley, please present the first proclamation for the hammer throw for Sophia Galucci. Our councilwoman, Ms. Shockley will read the proclamation. Is Ms. Galucci here? Please stand and come forward. We're happy to have everyone recognize you.
Your coach is going to recognize you further, but I wanted to just congratulate you on behalf of the Town Council. Just a point of reference, I happen to work with your father and I don't think he could be more proud. So this proclamation is for Coventry High School's National Hammer Throw Champion, Sophia Galucci. Whereas Sophia Galucci, through hard work, discipline, athleticism, and a commitment to her sport and herself, won the National Hammer Throw Championship with a throw of 179 feet, 10 inches. And whereas, her achievement has been a source of pride to the community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Town Council of the Town of Coventry, on behalf of its citizens, extends its sincere congratulations to Sophia Galucci, her coaches, and her parents for a job well done. In testimony whereof, and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed on this 23rd day of August 2021. And in fact, it was President Dixon's hand.
Please, please come forward to receive your proclamation.
Yes, and I would like to have your coach, Erica Holbogan, come forward to say a few words.
I guess this is my last duty as Sophia's track and field coach, but my name is Erica Holbogan. I'm the girls' cross country and track and field coach at Coventry High School. It is my esteemed pleasure to say a few words about Sophia Galucci, the 2021 high school national champion in the hammer throw. Sophia's mother, Melie, and I drank coffee together one morning in Eugene, Oregon, after Sophia had won her title, and discussed what actually went into Sophia's high school track and field success. What does it take to be a national champion? Well, first, Sophia is an extremely talented thrower. Her natural abilities and strength were evident very early on to our throws coach, Michael Loughlin, and myself. Second, Sophia is extremely dedicated to her training and success. If you want to win a national championship, extra time is needed in the throw circle. And Sophia utilized every extra practice she could, both in and out of the competitive track and field season. Practicing the hammer is not glamorous. Sophia was out in the circle on the hottest of summer days and throwing outside on the coldest and snowiest of days of winter as well. Third, Sophia knows how to make difficult decisions. When faced with the option of maintaining her current academic track, which would make her academically desirable to 97% of the colleges in the United States, Sophia made the decision to drop a course that she loved and enroll in more AP and honors classes. Doing so made her attractive to 100% of the colleges in the United States, including the Ivies. It worked. She's headed to Brown next year. You do not get into Brown on your athletic laurels alone. One must prove they can handle the academic rigors as well. The next ingredient was a very knowledgeable throws coach. I am thankful to Michael Loughlin, the extra time he puts in with not only Sophia, but all of our throwers is extraordinary. His knowledge of the hammer throw, a very technical event, is absolutely outstanding. Coach O'Laughlin was instrumental in Sophia's success. Lastly, and most importantly, Sophia has an extremely close and supportive family. I remember when her sister Natalie graduated from Johnson and Wales. Sophia did not attend the graduation. She was at the Class A championships. Following Natalie's graduation, the entire family arrives at the meet dressed to the nines to cheer on Sophia. Her brother Robert is a talented photographer and often volunteers to make sure all the seniors on the track made pictures of themselves competing as part of their senior gifts. Robert also photographs other sports as well, for free. Sophia's parents, well specifically her mother Melanie, make sure the track and throwing circles are clean and clear before all of our home meets. She also made absolutely sure Sophia ate correctly and got enough sleep every week throughout training and competition. Additionally, Sophia was never late to anything. Melanie got her to everything promptly. Sophia did not always have good days as well. Training and competing is not rainbows and butterflies. It is both hard physically and mentally. Melanie always knew how to support Sophia through these times. She was nurturing and supportive on one hand, but held Sophia to very high standards on the other. I will miss my weekly phone calls with Melanie and seeing the Galucci family at track meets. Sophia's national championship title has been the highlight of my coaching career. I am very excited to see what the future holds for her at Brown and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you for those very inspirational and motivational words. Sophia, congratulations again from all the members of the Town Council and all the Town Manager and all the staff here. We're very proud to have you with us this evening and have a wonderful career at Brown. I graduated from Brown myself, so I know it's an exciting place. Thank you. Next set of proclamations will go to the cheerleading team. And Ms. Lima will now present the documents and read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam President. We have some members of the team here. If you guys would like to stand and be recognized, that would be great. And they're joined by their coach also. So it reads, whereas the Coventry High School cheerleading team rejoined the competitive cheering landscape in Rhode Island after a 14-year hiatus in 2019, and whereas the team faced a number of obstacles in making a comeback as a powerhouse program in the state, including facility availability for practice, as well as the global pandemic. And whereas COVID-19 took away the opportunity for the team to cheer and participate on the sidelines at high school soccer and football games in the fall of 2020, eliminating another opportunity to practice and hone their skills as a team, but they continued to work together as a group determined to cheer. And whereas through it all, the team achieved unprecedented success in their first two years back as a program, earning first-place honors in multiple competitions hosted by neighboring schools in the Rhode Island Interscholastic League, bringing pride to the school and the Coventry community. And now therefore be it resolved, the Town Council hereby congratulates the Coventry High School Cheerleading Program on earning first-place honors for the Rhode Island Interscholastic League All-Girl Cheerleading Competition, as well as being crowned overall Division One State Champions in 2020, and earning top honors again in 2021 as Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division One Game Day State Champions. In testimony whereof, Anne has hereon to set her hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 23rd day of August 2021. Congratulations, guys, and thanks for bringing pride to the Town of Coventry.
I'd like to invite each member of the cheerleading team to come to the podium, introduce herself, and then pass by Ms. Lima, and she will give you a proclamation. So one at a time, come on up and introduce yourselves. Don't be shy. We know cheerleaders are not shy.
My name's Crystal Yates.
My name's Meg Britsky.
My name's Ayana D. Simone.
My name's Leila Weathers.
My name's Anna Fuentes.
My name's Leangy Calderon.
My name's Ariah Gessner.
And I'm their coach, Lolita Roberts.
We also have proclamations for all the members of the team who are not with us today and we'll give them to the coach. So thank you so much. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We're now at item C4, the President's announcements. First of all, I'd like to announce that the Coventry Building Committee will make a presentation on August 31st at a joint meeting of the Coventry School Building Committee, the Town Council, and the School Committee at the Coventry High School Media Center at 7:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss the proposal for a school redesign/construction project. Public input is encouraged, and we really encourage all members of the public to please come to that informational session on August 31st. Secondly, for September, the Town Council will have a session soliciting public comment on the use of COVID funds that we will have received as of that date. And we'll provide more information about the date as soon as we're able to set that date. We also have the following openings on boards and commissions. We have three openings on the Conservation Commission. The Conservation may recommend to the Town Council a program for better promotion, development, utilization, or preservation of open areas, streams, shores, wooded areas, roadside, swamps, marshlands, and natural aesthetic areas. We've been looking for a full complement of five members for this commission. We have not been successful, but we're not giving up. We have two good candidates now, and we just need three more. So please step forward and please apply. We also have openings for two full-time and two alternate members on the Sewer Subcommittee. This is going to be a very interesting, very productive group to be with as we will have many plans for thinking about what we want to do relating to sewers in our town. No decisions have been made. We just need to start that commission or that group going. We also are soliciting for the Charter Review Commission. We have needs to have people review our charter to make recommendations to the Town Council. And if those recommendations are approved, those recommendations will be placed on a referendum for a voter input. So we need nine members for the Charter Review Commission. I believe we've received applications for two or three people, solid people. So we need more people to apply for that commission. We are also thinking about reactivating the Poxon Recreation Commission. We'll discuss that a little bit more in our agenda. We need nine recommendations that will be forwarded to the Town Manager. The number of people on these commissions are all dictated by what is in our charter and what is in our Coventry Code. So we can't start a commission or board without the appropriate number of people. So we do encourage people to come and join us. The next item is C5. Yes, I've been reminded that we can let you know to take off. We do have very exciting meetings. I mean, if you like staying till 10 o'clock, I mean, there's lots of good stuff coming up. Okay, thank you so much. We do have some members here in the audience who love to stay for our entire meeting, so hooray for them. Town Manager Updates Agenda C5. Mr. Marshant?
Thank you, Madam President.
Can't really tell the difference.
Hello? That one's working. Thank you, Madam President. Just, I did send out a report on Friday to the Town Council that covers many of these issues. But just to run through them, I am planning to put together a training session for boards and commissions. We're looking for a date in October that won't conflict with any meetings of the Town Council, boards, or commissions. But this training will include training on the Open Meetings Act, Rhode Island's ethics laws, and just general housekeeping of what's entailed with serving as a volunteer for the Town of Coventry. We are preparing to have a strategic planning work session with the Town Council. Please mark the date of Friday, November 5th as the date we will have that. I'm looking to hold that from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And a venue is to be determined. I have at least one in mind, but I'm looking at options and getting quotes. I'm working on a proposal for a five-year sewer facilities plan. I have been meeting with our sanitary sewer engineer, Weston and Sampson. Mr. Kent Nichols has provided me some information, and I just need to kind of provide that to the Town Council as an option for review.
That's the question?
Yes.
So, Mr. Marshant, it was my understanding that an updated copy of that was going to be due here. I think it was August 31st. Is that not the date?
No. The current plan is a five-year plan, and it expires in October, October 31st.
Okay.
And really, there isn't any big consequence if the new plan isn't adopted prior to October 31st. But we want to begin working on that now. As I discussed with Mr. Nichols, because so little has been done on the plan, most of the plan is still valid, but what we talked about doing is doing a special study, kind of a focus capstone on the report to guide the town in its strategic next steps on how to best approach strategically building the sewer system in a way that will maximize the return on investments, the sustainability of the program, and address a lot of the concerns that have been raised about how much of the burden has been placed on individual homeowners and new sewer accounts versus what perhaps could and maybe ought to be borne by the utility itself in terms of growing its infrastructure and adding accounts.
Will you be updating the Sewer Subcommittee on your findings after you work with the sanitation engineer?
Yes, so I am planning to bring the proposal to the Sewer Subcommittee first for review, and then we can move forward with a recommendation of the Town Council.
Thank you.
I previously shared a I appreciate the responses I received. I made a few edits, and that request for proposal is being published this week, tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get some really good responses and options to consider for our meeting on September 13th.
Can I ask, are we sharing that with any people who perform this task, who have done it for other cities and towns in Rhode Island? Sometimes with an RFP, you share it with people who you'd like to bid on it, as well as making it public.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
We currently have a request for proposals out on the comprehensive plan, that we are receiving proposals until September 7th, and given the, the timing of receiving it on the 7th, we'll probably need more time to review before we get it on the next agenda, so it'll probably be on the September 27th agenda if everything looks in order.
When are we receiving our RFP bids on the operations audit?
September 3rd.
Oh, September 3rd. So you're putting it up tomorrow, and they're getting September 3rd?
Yes. It's a shorter timeframe, but it's a much smaller project.
And where are we?
The, what are the, the Newport Bulletin?
The Town's website.
The Town's website, the State Providence Journal?
Yes.
Providence Journal and the Kent County Times.
On the comprehensive plan, can you just remind us, because I have had a couple of questions from people in, in my district, we did put out a comprehensive plan, RFP, earlier in the year, correct?
Correct.
We just did not get any?
We did not receive any proposals or interest because of the, there were deadlines in that proposal that made a lot of potential vendors reluctant to bid on it, because the nature of a comprehensive plan done correctly involves a lot of community input and engagement and cooperation with the community, and some of those exchanges can take longer. It's hard to pin down a time certain, and so having a deadline by when it'll be done is uncertain and out of their control, so that might have been a reason we didn't get as many proposals.
Thank you for implementing the feedback, and I, I'm hoping we get a better turnout this time.
Thank you. And lastly, on my report on the community survey, I guess my next steps will be to prepare an RFP and put that out in the coming weeks to see what kind of proposals we get, because I have not been able to find any vendors locally readily, and so I'll advertise and see what we get.
Thank you, Mr. Marshant. Are there any other questions from, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Marshant, are there any other questions from members of the council on the report? Okay, thank you. Next item, Agenda Six, reference pages 23 to 28. Ms. Mills, our Finance Director, your finance report for July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Hello. Is this on? Yep. Attached is the budget update for June 21, represents 100% of the year. Revenues are currently at 104.61%, slightly lower than last year's 104.97%, and expenditures are currently at 101.32%, lower than last year's 103%. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions.
Are there many members of the council would like to ask any questions? Ms. Ludwig.
Thank you, Director Mills. If I take a look at the executive summary, so this would be the second page of the, of the memo, there's just a few areas that stand out that we, we tend to ask about because they're higher than what we originally projected at this point in the year, so I just want to make sure my understanding's correct. Under the prior year collections at the 185%, is that simply because of the stated in the notes that we are including some of the COVID funding from last year in that number?
The prior year collections at 338.784?
So I'm looking at prior year collections, budget 182.
Right.
Actual 338.
Yeah, that's, that's more a component of possibly not really budgeting it properly in the prior years, because you can see, as, as last year's, it was at 464, so maybe it's just more of a component of not being properly budgeted, being more conservative on the revenue side.
Okay. And then two other areas caught my attention, and I believe we've talked about these each month, the last, the last few months, I just want to make sure. So, other departments, if you go further down the list, other departments, we had budgeted 656, and we're at 2.3.
Yeah, we did this before, didn't we? Yes. So if we go into the detail, that's on the revenue side, so if you look at the detail on the, I don't know what number page it is, but hold on. 656. Next page. 656. I always have to find that one. Hold on. Two, three. Okay, yeah, that's, I mean, it's the, it's the same, it's exact same numbers of, not the exact same, or slightly increased from, from last month, it's miscellaneous income. We have the wed settlement of 765, and we have some other miscellaneous income in there that this year we're going to break out into the respective departments, so we have miscellaneous income, let's see, from the town clerks, DPW, that occasionally, occasionally, well, not occasionally, for the most part, have been booked as miscellaneous income, so we're going to break them out to the respective departments this year, but, so that's what that was.
And then one last question, so we talked about this a little bit last time as well, in the state motor vehicle phase-out, where we were basically, it sounds like we were told by the state, you're not getting any further funding from this because you've got COVID money. Can you just talk with us, how are you and, and the Town Manager, you know, looking at, at this type of, I guess, reduction of what we would have thought we would get, and now we won't be getting those funds? How do you, how do you work on overall budget when we don't get anything else in from this?
So, so that's, that's a product of, you know, the state of Rhode Island deciding that we received 2.3 million in COVID, yet we're going to take 1.1 back from, and reduce your motor vehicle revenue. And, and the plus side, we've had an increase in revenue, so on, and other sources, we were, we're very fortunate to have the wed settlement, and we had a couple other miscellaneous incomes that had, you know, compensated for that shortfall, including the COVID of 2.03, 2.3, which with the net reduction of 1, I think it was 1.1, we got to 1.168 left. So, there's really not much we can do from that perspective. I did review the, when we did the current budget, I did confirm what our reimbursement would be this year, and clearly, we're not going to, most likely not getting any more COVID funds that would be reducing our motor vehicle reimbursement.
So my understanding is, as President Dixon mentioned, we'll be having a COVID funding type of public session next month, where we ask the public, you know, what, what do they think we should be using COVID money on? And I think we've talked a couple times about having some sort of summary, one-pager that says we got the money in from here, or this is what we were promised, this is what we've gotten so far. Can we also include this particular item so people understand that, that this decision was made outside of the town to not send in the rest of the expected funding for motor vehicle side?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for members of, other questions for members of the council? Mrs. Mills, we have discussed this in other sessions, but we do have quite a few members of the public with us. We have a surplus of $3,529,724, that was at the end of the fiscal year. How do we end up with this kind of surplus?
The 3.5?
Yes.
Well, we have, we just talked about the COVID, did get reduced by a million dollars. We had the miscellaneous income that, of 765 from wind energy, we've, let's see what else we've got. We've had a couple other, in miscellaneous income, there was one other settlement, and I don't have it right here with me, but there was a substantial settlement from, from something So, if you look at, if, I mean, I was to do the math, I mean, that's going to take care of most of it. If, if we took away the, the COVID and some of those settlements, we'd probably be around 2, 300 surplus, 2, 300,000. So, it's, it's helped out.
So the surplus is actually the category into which we have placed wed money, COVID money, et cetera, is that what you're saying?
So, yeah, there's some extraordinary miscellaneous income, plus the COVID money, the, the COVID money received from the, you know, it's actually the CARES, the CARES Act, not the, the current act that's out.
Right, okay, thank you.
Based on President Dixon's question, so even though this shows as a surplus, a lot of this money, while not earmarked, has to be spent on certain things?
Well, so we've already spent the COVID money, from this, this COVID money of 2.3 was from the Trump administration, we've already sent in the application, and we utilized 100% of that for the, the police department salaries, and so therefore, that is not restricted at this point.
Perfect, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, good. Because the taxpayers may be wondering why we have all this surplus and muted tax increase, so this helps explain how that category is being used to capture monies that have come in. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right, we will be having a, a session, as mentioned, in September to talk about the financial health of Coventry, so that we have a better picture of how we stand for our finances, so that we can make better decisions, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We're now at item C7, the item that I've been waiting for the whole evening, Mr. Wasika.
Right.
As is he. This is Mr. Wasika's last monthly report to the Town Council before his deserved retirement. Mr. Wasika.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Update on the solar generation project, the, the Arnold Mill former dump site. We had a public forum on August 7th over at the Town Hall Annex, we had about 25 to 30 residents show up. I had sent out 501 letters to surrounding residents that lived out to a half-mile away from the site. We also had about seven or eight residents that came in via Zoom, because we did the meeting in, in both formats. It was overwhelmingly positive for the support of this project. There were, there were numerous questions, I thought it went very well, everybody seemed more or less in agreement with what we were doing, there were some questions that were brought up, and we're going to be working, the, those questions will be handled as the process moves forward, if the process moves forward. Biggest one was about a glare, glare study on if it's going to affect any of the surrounding, but that went real well. We have two pieces of the puzzle left to do to complete the, the lease on this project. One you have in front of you tonight, which is simply a letter of intent, and all that letter of intent is, is just saying that you agree to move forward, there's no commitment on the town, this isn't locking us in. If you do that, I will, I've got four days left, we've pretty much got the lease ready to rock and roll, we will finalize that, I'll turn it over to Ben, or if you'd like, I'll, Ben and Russ Mayman from, from Solar Development Company can finalize it whichever way you want. If you want, I will, like I said, I will take care of it the next couple of days and get that, so all Ben will have to do, excuse me, Samashant will have to do, is put it up in front of you, of you ladies and gentlemen. So that'll be set, done, and that's going to, we're talking about the tune of about $120,000 a year that that will generate passive income from the town, there'll be no cost to the town, so hopefully when the item comes up for the resolution authorizing Mr. Marshant, to sign that letter of intent that you will approve it, so we can, we can finalize this and, and put this project to bed. I'm real happy with this, I'm, this project is actually coming to fruition and completion well over a year in advance of when it was supposed to be completed. Because of the way this project was handled, using budget material as opposed to the original plan, the town of Coventry went from owing millions upon millions of dollars to pay to cap that site, to actually receiving all of the money that's necessary to cover the next 30 years of O&amp;M, not counting the money, money on this lease. Typically, what would happen in a situation like that, the lease money would actually cover the O&amp;M moving forward on the project, but because there's so much money in reserve on this project, from the way by collecting the funds for, for utilizing the budget material, people had to pay to dump their material onto the project instead of us paying to buy material. So it was, it was a great setup, it's been very beneficial to the town, it's, it was a project that actually is getting us money instead of losing us money. So I'm very happy with this, I'm, I'm glad it's, I'm finishing it off before I, I retire. It's something I look forward to seeing, that the solar panels up on there, hopefully by spring or summertime. The winter turbines in your packet that I gave, and the report that you received, I've updated the daily shutdowns, which in the last 28 days, there were no additional shutdowns of, of the turbines or any turbines to reduction of flicker, it just, it wasn't necessary, so it hasn't been shut down. We're still at a total of 5.5 hours of total shutdown on, I believe it was Tower 2, Turbine 2, so that's done. Last but not least, the Johnson's Pond water level, I know you guys had a, excuse me, the council had a briefing today from Mr. Glorum, so I'm not going to get into any of that, I'll simply say that we are at 24 inches below spillway at the present time. As of this afternoon, we are at 41.5 cubic feet per second on the flow rate out, so the gates have been closed, it is rising, it rose four inches from yesterday morning to this morning. I'll know more numbers tomorrow on where we are, we've got additional rain this evening, which will help, typically, an inch of rain will bring up to a foot of increase on the, on the pond. So hopefully, we've received enough rain over the last couple of days, and that, those numbers will go back up over the next couple of days. Is it going to make full spillway? I doubt it, but it should get to a much closer point than where it is right now. So, that's where we are with that. And I just want to thank everyone, it's been fun, and I appreciate everything working for you.
Don't go away, Mr. Wasika.
I want you to end without a question.
Yes.
Can I ask, you mentioned that in the meeting, there was, there was talk of a glare study, could you just let us know what the outcome of that conversation was?
Well, no, that we agreed, Russ Mayman from Solar Development is going to be conducting that. Russ, have you started that process yet?
No, we will.
So that's been agreed to, we will be doing it, and that we will know before, as it moves forward through planning and zoning and the rest of the permitting process that needs to be done, because when we, when you sign the lease, we're done with, with that. The project moves forward just like any other project, anybody putting something in. We're simply, this is simply to lease that land to them, we're out of it, we collect cash every, every year, thank you very much, we'll get about $20,000 a year in, in tax, tax money on the, this $5,000 per megawatt that the town receives, it's, the project is currently slated to, to be 5 megawatt DC, 4 megawatts of actual AC energy that comes out of it, based on the, the transfer, the conversion from AC, from DC to AC. So about, close to $100,000 in, in lease fee, at $18,000 per megawatt, and then $20,000 in basically tangible link on the taxes, so just about 120, and the rest of the numbers will be finalizing over the next day or so. There was some talk about, we, it was originally set for a 1% annual increase, we've, we're modifying that to a much better number, and that'll all be in the lease, and that'll be available once you have the lease in front of you. So hopefully by the next council meeting, Russ, you don't need that before the next meeting in September, right? You need just a letter tomorrow.
Letter of fact, yep.
And, and then the lease will go at the next council meeting, so that's where we are. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Lima.
So I just, I just want to be clear, so on the wind turbine issue, are the folks, is there, has there been resolution here, or are we just kind of at a holding pattern? Are the folks over there sat? I just want to be clear what next steps are there.
Well, the, one of the next steps we need to understand, one of the next steps we need to understand is, Mr. Wasika, you have been doing the monitoring reports, who's going to be? uh, Mr. Wazika, you have been doing the monitoring reports. Who's going to be doing that?
I will have those numbers transferred over to, to Mr. Samashant. Same thing with the water level numbers that, that we do every day. I will have them sent over to Ben and Mr. Samashant and Mr. Gorham as well. So they both receive it. Uh, during moving forward, whatever you, uh, the council decides to do on, uh, on the legal side of all of this.
Thank you. In answer to Mrs. Lima's question, uh, we are planning a follow-up meeting to discuss the wind generation facilities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, Mr. Wazika, we, we have a nice proclamation for you. So Mr. Samashant is going to read it. Mr. Samashant, this is assigned one.
Are, are you sure you don't want to read it, Madam President? Since you have had this relationship with him and I'm just the, the new arrival.
Good way to get out of it. Like that.
Well, didn't we practice this afternoon reading it together?
Can you sing it?
No, I'm not allowed to sing, even if I'm the only person in the house. Okay. This is a proclamation in honor of Ed Wazika for 16 years of service. If there are any incorrect mistakes, 17, we will correct this immediate. Whereas Ed Wazika began employment with the town of Coventry on Monday, September 20th, 2004. From 2004 to the president, Ed served the town as information technology director, management information system director, acting town manager and administrative officer to the town council. In each role, he served with passion and concern for his staff and the community. And whereas Mr. Wazika stepped in when the town needed him and served with pride and commitment. And whereas on Friday, August 27th, 2021, Mr. Wazika will have completed 16 years, 11 months and seven days of service with the town of Coventry and will begin to enjoy his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Coventry Town Council of the town of Coventry expresses its sincere appreciation and thanks to Edward Wazika for 16 years of exemplary service to the town of Coventry and the community and wishes him good health and a long, enjoyable retirement. In testimony thereof and on behalf of the Honorable Town Council, I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of the town to be affixed this 23rd day of August 2021. Congratulations, Mr. Wazika.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the council would like to say a few words?
I would like to thank Ed for the assistance that he gave me as a new council member coming on. And as a resident, before I decided to go on to the town council, um, you had a very open door policy, uh, giving me any information I asked for and get, putting me in contact with others. So, um, as a resident and a counselor, I thank you for your time and service. I noticed we've counted it down like a prison sentence, but, um, you know, we're glad you were able to be here. And, um, it looks like you and your wife are ready to enjoy a very active retirement.
She is anyways. I forgot about myself.
Okay. Mrs. Lima.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wazika, for your service and, um, please enjoy retirement and, um, the town of Coventry thanks you. And I didn't get to know you very well in my short time on the council so far, but I've heard great things and, uh, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ms. Ludwig.
Mr. Wazika. So, um, one thing that, um, one thing that I would say that doesn't happen often is that in every interaction I've had with you, uh, over the last several years, not just on the council, but also as a subcommittee member and as a resident, you always put the town first. And, um, I know that you've made some very difficult decisions in the last few years, you know, as town manager, interim town manager, and I believe you've always put the town first. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Wazika, you've been the only manager I've ever had, at least in the town level. So I greatly appreciate all the mentorship and all of the, uh, information that you provided me so that I could do a better job as a councilwoman. So I appreciate the time. Uh, you definitely have a commitment to the town of Coventry, a passion for the job. I know it's difficult to step in as an interim town manager. You think you're going to be here six months and then six months becomes a year and a year becomes a year and a half and a year and a half becomes two years and on it goes. And you have, uh, grown with the job as a town manager and you've also helped each of us grow to be better people. So we greatly appreciate the time you've spent with us. Are there any other members of the staff here who would like to make any comments? Mr. Gorham.
It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you at, um, the accolades that have been offered tonight. I had the privilege of working with you on so many things and I completely agree with the nice sentiments that have been offered. And I wish you a really nice and long retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public here who would like to make a comment, who are sitting in, in the audience? Well, if you, if you'd like to sit down and take all these compliments, you may. Are there any members of the public? Okay. Okay. I'd like to call on members who are maybe on Zoom who might like to, uh, make a comment at this time. Any hands raised at this point?
I was just going to say.
Oh, Ms. Mills, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed, for hiring me. And it's been nice working with you.
Yes, we, we are very thankful that you were able to, um, bring Ms. Mills to us. She's been so valuable and I know that you searched very, very hard to find just the right replacement for our finance director and, uh, we've been very, very pleased to, to have her on board. So thank you. Are there any hands raised? No? Okay.
Cody, how many are in attendance? Just out of curiosity.
Okay. Who is that? Uh, Mr. Clemens.
I just wanted to say, Ed, thank you for always adhering to the three strikes rule and letting me get in my last comments on Zoom. Uh, we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens. I can't see the number from here. Okay.
Cody, how many are on Zoom?
19 on Zoom. Thank you. Okay. Last chance to make a comment. All right. Thank you so much. Um, I've had a request by the town clerk if we could move agenda items F, license for discussion and our actions, um, up before section E consent agenda for discussion and our action. May I have a motion to move section F before E?
Do we not want to do the tax assessment right now?
I think it's because that person is here.
Uh, we were asked.
Yeah, we still want it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to move agenda items F, 1, 2, 3 before items E?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Foyers, no nays, the motion passes. Okay. Next item, F1. We just had a couple of comments.
Oh, that was, okay.
Yes, we did.
I wasn't sure if that was just.
I think no. Uh, F1. Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item?
Exhibition and performance license, Westerly, Western Rhode Island Civic Historical Society, Paint House Museum Historic Brass Band on September 18th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to represent this organization? Who looks, yes, please come forward. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, Donna Wedge, 24 Hunter's Crossing Drive, Coventry.
Thank you. And do you have a comment about the, um, license for the Western Rhode Island Civic Historic Society for Historic Brass Band?
I don't have a comment. I assumed you guys had questions or so.
Are you a member of the, uh, his, um, Paint House Museum? Okay. Can you just tell us a little bit about this, um, activity?
Sure. We're having Heritage Day on Museum Day, which, um, all the museums are open and Paint House will be open for free tours that day as well. We have many events happening. On the one, there'll be, um, Civil War reenactors, a Civil War band. We're hoping to have a pie baking contest, so.
Just speak into the microphone a little bit.
I'm sorry. Yes, we're hoping to have a pie baking contest. So any of you that like to bake, we'd hope you would participate in that as well. There'll be a vendor's market and some children's games and cornhole for adults. So we have a lot of, um, exciting stuff happening that day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, members of the council, the resolution for this, uh, the information for this is on page 46. Any questions about this license? May I have a motion to approve the license for, uh, an exhibit, exhibition and performance license for the Western Rhode Island Civic Historic Society Paint House Museum Historic Brass Band on September 18th, 2021?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig.
I'm looking forward to the event. Um, this is in my district. So I've spoken with Brenda a few times about related issues to the Paint House and I, uh, took a tour about two or three months ago. So this looks fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're excited to have you.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call vote. Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Foyers, no nays. The license is approved. Thank you very much. The next item is exhibitions and performance license for Grow Coventry Camp Westwood Art and Craft Festival, September 25th, 2021. Is there someone here who wish to speak about this, um, request? Hello, Mrs. Smith? Please introduce your name, give your name and address.
Norma Smith, my address, 684 Washington Street. Yeah, I'll have to stand. Okay, thank you. Um, this is, uh, an arts and craft festival. The first one we're doing is Grow Coventry. Grow Coventry was formed after the 2016 town anniversary because we felt at the time that the town needed ongoing events and whatever. We've been slow to start, obviously, because of everything's slow in the beginning and then COVID pretty much stopped us. So this is our first event since COVID with the purpose is we are a tax exempt, no we're not, a nonprofit with the state. We are filing for tax exempt status with IRS and we're raising the funds to do that so that we can get grants and sponsorships for our events in the future, fireworks or parades or whatever the, may come along. Um, this arts and crafts festival will be an annual event. It is an assortment of crafters, artists. There will be a band, so there will be music and there will also be local authors. So it covers a varying perspective of art. Uh, and like I say, this is at camp. This is the first time we do this. It's at Camp Westwood on September 25th.
Okay, thank you. Members of the council, do you have any other questions from Mrs. Smith?
What type of band?
Uh, classic rock mixed. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the license for, uh, exhibit exhibitions and performance license for Grow Coventry?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Ludwig.
So you mentioned that this is the first time, um, that you're doing the event. And it sounded like you've kind of been chugging along and then COVID hit. So is, I think I'm actually, I've, I've heard the term Grow Coventry before, but where, where can we find out more information? Is there a Facebook page?
Yes, there is. There's a Grow Coventry Facebook page and there's a Grow Coventry Public Facebook group.
Okay. Thank you.
And two things. It was said at the time that I applied that possibly for nonprofits, you forego the $100 deposit, a $100 fee. Is that a possibility or do we pay the $100 fee?
They're not, but you're not yet the nonprofit.
We're a nonprofit with the state.
We don't, we don't waive the fee because we still expend the resources to process the application.
They've always done it in the past. That's why I'm asking. They did it with Paint House in the past and they didn't mention it. Uh, they've done it with Paint House. They've done it with, in the past with National, uh, what's, what's his name? Nathaniel Green. They've done it in the past. That's why I'm asking the question. If it's different, it's different, but that's why I'm asking the question. They have done it in the past.
Mr. Wazika has his hand up. Mr. Wazika.
In, in my three years, we always apply to that. We always, uh, forego the, uh, the fee for nonprofits. If it was something, you know, in the town and, uh, we've always done it to be happy, but that was something that was in play before life started. And we continue that on through the last central council. But again, that's up to the council. We have always done that for any of the nonprofits applying.
Uh, we haven't had a discussion among the council members whether, whether to do it or not do it. Uh, we are going to have a meeting, um, in just a few weeks to talk about our financial stability, so to speak, as a town, at which point that might be a good discussion item to have at that time. Uh, council members, how do you feel about this?
I mean, I don't know how much money.
I don't know how much money we're gaining or losing by waiving fees for nonprofits, but I do like the idea of local nonprofits that are Coventry residents doing things in Coventry. Like I said, I'd like more information, but my, at first glance, I do like the idea of waiving it for our local nonprofits.
Mrs. Lima?
Well, I, I'm, I'm hearing precedent history, so it sounds like it would be unfair to, to stop that for one organization. But I'll defer to, I'll yield the floor to Mr. Marshant who has his hand up.
Ms. Ludwig? Oh, Mr. Marshant.
The license fee is $100.
Yes.
Right. No, I don't know how many people we do it for.
Oh.
We've been doing it for everybody.
Because of entertainment. If we weren't having, the same thing with Paint House. They're having entertainment. They've always, they've never had to pay the fee because I used to belong to Paint House. They've never had to pay the fee. If that's something new, that's fine. I just need to know.
No, it, it's not that it's something new. It, it's new to me. It's the first time it's come before me as a request. And so I did not know the history and I did not know the context. So, um, in the interest of keeping with tradition, I'd recommend waiving the fee and we can revisit this at our next meeting in terms of future events.
And is, if the same would go for Paint House as well. I mean, I don't know if she didn't know it, but that's why I'm bringing it up.
Ms. Emma Toronto?
So typically what happens is, and this is just past experience, is that there always is a fee listed and then one of the council members makes a motion to waive the fee for the nonprofit or the business. That's usually, and it's all a new council and new manager.
That's why I'm bringing it up because that's what it's been in the past. If it's not happening again, I just need to, clarification is all.
Well, you don't get what you don't ask for. So it's good that you're bringing it up.
The worst thing you can do is say no.
Exactly.
I think by tradition, we have been waiving the fee. Um, we need a council member to, uh, make a motion to waive the fee. And I would suggest we waive the fee for both the Paint House and for Grow Coventry.
Thank you.
But I think that this agenda item needs to be discussed at a future meeting so that we can make a determination. Um, I really don't have any idea of how many fees we've, uh, we've said to, to eliminate, um, for the whole year. I don't know how much money we're gaining or losing.
It's always been Nathaniel Green. It's always been Paint House. It's always been Coventry Historical and now Grow Coventry.
Yeah.
Because it's new.
Yes, I understand. I think we're going to have to make a decision going forward. But today, I think, um, I will entertain a motion from a member of the council to waive the fee for the Paint House, uh, the Western Rhode Island Civic Historic Society and Grow Coventry.
So I'll make the motion for the Western Rhode Island Civic Historical Society to waive the $100.
Okay.
Are we doing one at a time?
We'll do one at a time.
Okay.
We have a motion. Do we have a second for, um, Western Rhode Island Civic Historic Society?
I'll make a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Um, Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Foyers, no nays. Okay. The fee is now waived for the Western Rhode Island Civic Historical Society. May I have a motion to waive?
Wait, um, just point of order. I think we now have to vote on the amended license because we motioned and seconded for the license and we just amended the fee within that. So now we have to vote on the amended license.
Okay. What we can do is since we have a motion and a second to vote on approving the license for Glow, Grow Coventry, we'll take a vote on that and then we will have another. and then we will have another motion on waiving the fee.
Yes, thank you.
So the motion is to approve the license for Grow Coventry. We have a motion made. We have a second. Do I have any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Foyers, no nays. The motion passes to approve the license for Grow Coventry. Now we need a motion to waive the fee for Grow Coventry. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Foyers, no nays. The motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
One more thing for correction in minutes. I'm not Mrs. Smith.
Okay, Ms.
Ms.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, that's fine. It's not a big deal.
You just earned both your groups an extra hundred dollars. It's a good night for you, Ms. Smith. I said you just earned both your groups an extra hundred dollars.
That's okay, but I just figured for minutes, otherwise it really doesn't matter.
We will, we will change it to Ms.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item F-three fireworks, fireworks license application by John Studley for fireworks at forty-seven Indian Trail on September fifth, twenty twenty-one, eight P.M., rain date September sixth, twenty twenty-one. Is Mr. Studley here? Mr. Marshon, do you have any comments about this application for a license?
No, I do not. I'm not familiar with it.
Members of the council, we have the paperwork in front of us, pages fifty to fifty-one.
It says contingent upon local fire marshal approval?
Yes, it says contingent upon local fire marshal approval. Applicant has applied with the State Fire Marshal's Office, and the display location is seventy-six Indian Trail, as we mentioned.
The license says forty-seven Indian Trail. Are we going to have an issue here with location?
We will. Yes, we will.
On the license, it says forty-seven Indian Trail. On the application, it says, "Display location is seventy-six Indian Trail."
Mrs. Anne Matrano, can you help us with this? We have two different locations listed.
I don't see an inscription.
On, on the agenda, it says forty-seven.
I was gonna say the two pieces of paperwork in here are seventy-six.
Yeah, on page three of eighty-three, it says forty-seven. On page fifty of eighty-three, it says seventy-six.
I can look into that.
Do we need to make a?
Right. Let me just double check. It might be a typo on the agenda.
Why don't we just postpone the vote on this while you check on this?
Their event is September fifth, so it's.
But we can postpone it to a little later in the agenda. Are you able to check on that today? Excellent. We'll come back to this agenda item.
Can I also ask if anyone knows if this is the first year this fireworks display has gone on, or if this is a Labor Day tradition?
Okay, thank you.
I mean, so if it says seventy-six, can we just, can we amend our motion to say seventy-six?
We can, but we don't know what the number is yet.
It says seventy-six in both places in the.
It says seventy-six on the fireworks license. It just has a forty-seven on the agenda, so I think it's just, I think the agenda has a typo.
I can check right now.
Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item. So we're just going to postpone this for a few minutes. Let's move on. Consent agenda. We're moving on to Agenda E-one Tax Assessors Additions and Abatements for April first, twenty twenty-one through August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Good evening.
Hello. How are you?
Fine. This is pages thirty to forty-four in our packet.
Okay, so we have abatements in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents, and additions in the amount of fifty-four thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents. Any questions?
Is there anything unusual about these abatements that need to be noted?
No, after bills go out, there's always a bunch of things that come back, and motor vehicles that didn't belong here, and this got messed up or that got messed up. So yeah, no, it's not unusual.
Okay, any questions by members of the council?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwick?
Hi, thank you for joining. I just wanted to understand, because we haven't seen this many before, but the assessments, are we on receivables right now, or are we on abatements only?
We're on abatements right now. It's the first, it's in our packet, abatements.
Okay.
Starting on page thirty-three, new receivables, page thirty-three.
I'm sorry, can we ask about receivables and abatements at the same time?
You can do that.
Yeah, they're on together.
Okay, yeah, so some of the numbers are just really high here.
New constructions.
Okay, so for example, if we see something on here for, you know, seventy thousand, and then the bill amount is actually only like fifteen hundred bucks, there was some sort of, so I'll just say on the first page of new receivables.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not picking on anybody. I'm just choosing the first one by chance. So this is a twelve-old Pacanasset. So it'll say assessment forty-six K, bill amount eight ninety-two.
Twelve old Pacanasset? What page is that?
This is on the first page of receivables.
It's the second.
I'm sorry. I have a lot of paper in front of me. I'm sorry. This is page thirty-two of eighty-three of my packet.
Okay.
So if we.
So that's a supplemental. So that's maybe that they bought the place and the old owner had an exemption that they are not entitled to, so we have to prorate that exemption. I don't know exactly. I can find out.
Is it just, this, well, I guess my point is, it just seemed like there were a number of these. Like we'll see, we'll have a handful of these here and there, but it's two or three pages of assessments that are really large, like forty thousand, eighty thousand dollars, and then it says bill amount, you know, eight hundred bucks. So I just wondered, is this the time of year that this usually comes in, or?
It is because new constructions.
Excuse me, Ms. Janie, could you please speak in front of the microphone? Thank you.
New constructions, when, when they sell, when they sell.
Right, in front close up.
I can't, I can't put them on the, I have to put them on the new roll. I can't put them on the old tax roll. So we have to wait, and then we have to prorate them because we're. Well, because they're billed fiscally, but they're actually annual. So from December one to June, it just gets dicey because I can't bill the new owner on the old tax bill roll because it's closed. So I have to wait for the new tax roll.
Okay, so for example, on the real first page, I guess, which is thirty-one of eighty-three, you know, just one example here, we didn't send a bill for thirty-six thousand dollars to Sixth Lane B in Coventry.
No, the bill wasn't for thirty-six. That's the assessment amount.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm, I'm seeing the wrong thing.
That's okay. That's okay.
That's my fault.
Yeah, that's the assessment amount.
Okay.
It's actually my question.
Why the assessments are so low? So none of these are new homes that have been built and bought? They're all like new pieces of property?
They could be a new home, or they could be a property that was sold to a person that doesn't have an exemption from a person that did have the exemption. So the difference is the exemption amount?
I'd be really curious.
So Carrie, can I help here a little bit? So I think, isn't the first few tangible, supplemental? So that would help them out and understand.
No, they're real property tangible.
Okay.
That wasn't a tangible. That was a modern home.
I have, I have one other question.
What's that?
Ms. Ludwick?
That's okay. I appreciate you also.
I have, I have one other question. This is on the abatements.
Abatements.
It's on my page forty-three. I think it's the second page of abatements. So when we have things on here like, you know, vehicles duplicated.
Yeah.
So for example, is this resident getting multiple tax bills? And then they notify you, or are we just finding this?
It was probably on one tax bill, and I probably got them twice, for whatever reason, in my raw detail, from DMV. And we can't check every motor vehicle bill, so yeah, they let us know. We say, yep, that's the same vehicle, same VIN number, same amount of days.
So they reach out to us to say, hey, this doesn't look great?
Yeah, and we say, yep, you're right, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions by members of the council? I have a motion to approve the Tax Assessors Report for Additional Abatements and Additions for April through August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Foyers, no nays. The motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item is E-two Coventry Land Trust Recommendation to Rename the Heritage Estates Property to the Janice L. Sullivan Conservation Area. Mr. Underwood? Mr. Underwood, please give your name, your address, and your role with the land trust, please.
Glenn Underwood, eight-one-eight Hopkins Hollow Road. I am the vice chairman, and we also have the chairman of the land trust, Josh Clements, here.
Welcome, Mr. Clements.
Thank you. Josh Clements, Ten Gentry Farm Drive.
So the land trust is bringing before the council a resolution to change the, the known name of the property that the Town of Coventry through the land trust purchased two years ago that's off of Bramble Bush Road. It goes to up to ledge road. It's a ninety-six acre parcel of land. It was introduced to the council and to everybody as a heritage estates property because it was going to be twenty-three houses that were going to be developed there. And that was how it was brought to us and has kept that name sort of through time. The owner of the property was Frederick Schick, who is the brother of, of Janice Sullivan, who passed away a few years back of cancer. Janice Sullivan was a longtime educator and also principal at the Western Coventry School. And during our discussions with Mr. Schick, he never made a contingent or anything on purchasing the property, but would like, mentioned that he would like something, you know, on the property to, you know, honor his sister. The land trust members have thought that, that, that this particular property, like our other properties, all sort of bear the names of the owner, the Boden property, the Stella Hall property, that it makes sense to dedicate this particular property in the name of Janice L. Sullivan Conservation Area. We think it would be a great honor. It's, it's well-earned. For most people that, that knew Mrs. Sullivan, know how much she cared about the community and how active and she was in recreation and wanted children to explore and do things. So we think this is a great honor. It also makes a lot of sense because heritage estates does not sound like a land trust property. It sounds more like of a development going on. So we are coming before you to ask for formal recognition of this property owned by the Town of Coventry to be renamed in the honor of Janice L. Sullivan.
Thank you. First of all, may I have a motion to rename Heritage Estates to the Janice L. Sullivan Conservation Area, then I'll ask for permits from the council? May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you. Discussion. Any questions by members of the council about this change of the name? Mrs. Shockley?
So it sounds like this is a lovely person whose brother owned the property, and I, I think the idea is wonderful. No one knows of any reason that this could be a negative in any way. We live in an interesting culture, and I just want to ask if any information about Miss Sullivan could possibly make it a negative for the Town of Coventry. Like I said, do not know Miss Sullivan, and of no way trying to cast dispersions.
No, I, I, I don't. In my lifetime, my children went to Western Coventry School, and Janice was the principal then. I have never come across a bad word ever said about her or anything that would bring a negative context to the Town of Coventry. I think, you know, we all believe this is a well-earned honor that, for her service, and also for her brother, for, for helping us make the acquisition go through. It was a difficult acquisition, but we made it happen.
And just my last question, because I just feel I don't understand. As far as the process costs involved, is there anything that we should know about that could impact, that the town would have to?
No, there's, there's no cost. You know, the property was bought with this, partially with a stake man and partially with the town land trust funds. And so this name change is more of a, a technical thing because it was always known as Heritage Estates. There is, I guess there's, you know, no formal way of naming various properties that the land trust has owned. It's been tradition that it's gone back to the owner's name, like the Boden property, the Stella Hall property, and that's how they're known. We feel that this would be, and Frederick Schick didn't want any recognition on himself. He wanted to pass that to, to Janice in her honor. And I think we all, on the land trust and the people that we've come across in the community, feel that this is, is a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this, Mr. Warren?
Yes, my firm did the closing, and I got to know Mr. Schick pretty well during the period when this sale was pending. And he actually, he didn't have to do this, but he waited until the D E M grant was approved, which he didn't have to do. He could have just sold it. He could have developed it. He never did, and really, the only thing he asked, and he only asked, was that his sister, Janice, be remembered. And I too, both of my kids went to Western Coventry when she was the principal, and she was very popular. I thought she was a really great principal. So I think we're pretty safe in doing this, but I think it's a good question these days. I agree. But I'll put my. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
We appreciate the testimonial echoing the words of Mr. Shockley. Any other comments? Okay, we have a.
I'll add one more comment right there.
Certainly.
In my partnership, my daughter started at Western Coventry, and I've met Mrs. Anzal on the previous principal, and now Dr. Bagley, the principal. And Janice Sullivan was her mentor, so you know, Janice's impact still, you know, echoes through this community today to the teachers and administrators in the school department. And our interactions with all of the neighbors and other individuals out on the trail has, has only been positive.
Excellent, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Ms. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Foyers, no nays. The proposal, the motion passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming this evening.
One last comment on this. We are having a dedication and open ceremony on the eighteenth of September. It's a Saturday at ten A.M., and all of you are welcome, and all of the members of the public are welcome. There'll be a brief hike out to the greenway and back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, item E-three. One of our councilwomen, Mrs. Lima, suggested that there may be some interest in activating the Parks and Recreation Commission. It has been inactive for a very long time. Mrs. Lima, would you like to speak to this recommendation?
Sure. So I had just had some conversation with Ms. Blumenthal about some other things in my own district and around town, and this was one of the things that got brought up that she would like to see renewed. And she, she has a lot of good support from the other recreational leagues in town. I think, personally, I think restarting this committee is a good step forward in showing the Coventry community that we're committed to top-of-the-line and best-in-class Parks and Recreation offerings and facilities. And I think this is, it shows a step forward that we want to continue to be a family community and continue to be a, what do I want to say? A hub of activity when it comes to family and activity and recreation. And I know that beyond just your traditional parks and rec of mowing facility, mowing fields or painting lines or taking care of the, the physical facilities, I know that they also would like to be, you know, co-sponsor and work with other organizations in town to bring larger-scale programming to town that I think people have wanted to see. So a committee like this that in our charter is made up right now of two high school students, two seniors, and then, and when I say seniors, I mean senior citizens. And then the rest will be filled with members of the public. That's a really diverse group to be able to contribute to the future and, and present of. That's a really diverse group to be able to contribute to the future and present of Parks and Recreation in town.
Any other questions? Okay, why don't we get a motion on the table first, and then we'll go to other questions?
Sure.
Okay, may I have a motion to reactivate the Parks and Recreation Commission?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, continued discussion. Mrs. Shockley?
Just before, if I may, I apologize. Just so the council knows that at the Madam President's direction, I've already been in touch with the principal of the high school and with Mr. Robillard at the senior center to let them know that this was a conversation and to start thinking about who they'd like to put forward or have apply. If we do passes tonight, I'll just ask if the administration could get an application process up on the website and hyperlink. So when we talk about all the committee openings, this is one we can also list and get that application out as well.
Mrs. Amatrono, as soon as it's possible, please get an application for Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you. The role of this commission is well defined in our documents, town documents. Ms. Ludwig?
Oh, Mrs. Shockley, I think one of them.
Sorry.
No, I just wanted to say that my children participate in town sports, and they play local lacrosse, soccer, basketball. And having good facilities is great for our local recreation for our kids. But there also are a lot of club sports. This could be a way for the town to actually get income. I know other cities and towns rent their facilities out in order to get income for the town. Their facilities do have to meet certain expectations. But those groups are willing to pay significant money to utilize fields in local cities and towns. So while this is, yes, another great way to get families out and have more activities for our children, it's also a way to possibly create more of an income stream through our Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you for that comment. Ms. Ludwig?
I didn't actually know much about this committee since we haven't had it recently. So thank you to Councilwoman Lima for bringing this up. It sounds like a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready for a vote? Okay, there's a motion on the table to reactivate the Parks and Recreation Commission. Roll call vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, foyer's no nays, the motion passes. Item E4, recommendation to the town manager regarding the appointment of a member to the Conservation Commission. Mrs. Amatrono, we have a nomination. What is the term for expiration for that?
They serve at the pleasure of the town manager. The term is not defined.
The term is not defined? I thought it was. Okay, my mistake.
It's similar to the Economic Development Commission.
Okay, this is a recommendation to the town manager. Some of for the public, some of our boards and commissions are a direct appointment by the town council. Other boards and commissions, it is a recommendation by the town council to the town manager who has the authority to appoint members to the particular board and commission. The Conservation Commission is one of those commissions in which the town manager makes the appointment. The town council is committed to interview everyone who applies for board and commission. We did interview the candidate who we are recommending, and we are forwarding her name. So we are recommending to the town manager the appointment of Diana O'Brien. And may I have a motion to recommend her to the town manager for an appointment to the Conservation Commission?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley? Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Foyers, no nays. Ms. Diana O'Brien is recommended to the town manager for appointment to the member as a member of the Conservation Commission. Next item is E5, resolution to authorize state housing aid appropriation to the Coventry Public Schools in the amount of $439,000 for facility and capital maintenance needs. Mr. Gorham, please speak to this.
This is resolution which I think it's been discussed at great length between the school department and town manager and the town council president about the propriety of doing this. And I think the resolution properly reflects that. So I'm not going to explain the whole problem. I don't think it's necessary unless someone has a question. But I've confirmed with the town manager, it's satisfactory to go ahead with this resolution. So unless there are questions, I think we're in good shape here.
May I have a motion for the resolution, which appears on page 45 of 83 of our packet?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll make the second.
Second. Any other discussion? Mrs. Lima?
Yes. So just to clarify on the record, we legally have to remit these funds, is what this resolution is saying.
That is correct.
Before we go to a vote, I just want to say publicly that I did watch the school committee meeting last week, or I think it was last week where this was discussed or two weeks ago. And I want it noted that I heard the rhetoric that was used by the school committee, and I would urge them next time to probably choose a different way to have gone about resolution when it came to this item. There were terms such as garbage and lies that were thrown the way of the administration and the town council. And I keep hearing words preached by the leadership in the school department of teamwork and collaboration. And I don't think that the tone that was set for that discussion is reflective of that. So I just would urge moving forward that the school committee maybe rethink how they approach something like this and see that with this on the agenda today, we are taking the step and remitting the funds legally as we're obligated to do. I'm in conversation with my state rep about the law as a whole, because even a member of the school committee at that meeting talked about how it's a flawed law. And I wanted to bring this to this state rep's attention. But otherwise, I want the school committee to recognize what's happening here tonight. And I just want them to understand that I saw what happened at that school committee meeting, and I wish it was handled differently. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
I believe we're requesting, I believe we're requesting a session, a joint session with the school committee to go over how we will meet these minimums going forward. And we've reached out to request that. So is that, is that, is my understanding correct there?
That is correct. We have sent out an invitation to have a joint meeting with us on September 13 to discuss minimum maintenance requirements. That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we have a motion. We have a motion for the resolution on page 45 of 83. Is there any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. Foyers, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you so much, everyone. And thank you, Mr. Gorham. We're now on to item G1, resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the letter of intent with balanced rock energy and watershed solar development for a lease for solar generation facility on Arnold Road. This is in our packet pages 52 to 56. The resolution is on page 55. I have a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Ludwig?
So just a few comments. So thank you to Councilwoman Lima for, and then also to Town Administrative Officer Ed Wazika for holding that public forum a week or two ago to get resident input. Thank you for the work that's gone into this to make this transparent and for collecting feedback, asking questions. This is the first time the council has done an additional step, gone above and beyond, learning from some of the past issues that we've had in town with major development like this coming in. So thank you to those involved who went the extra mile to reach out to residents, to have this session on a weekend, and also work on, work on the information itself with the vendor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mrs. Shockley?
I was wondering if Mr. Mayman can just say how this current letter compares to the one that you brought before us at the last meeting? Just so residents can have a better understanding. And I appreciate the report before just saying that residents are overall positive and you're going to be doing that glare study.
Yeah, sure. So the one change in the updated letter, two changes. We put the current town manager's name on there as someone who will execute the letter, as Mr. Wazika is resigning, retiring.
Retiring.
But more notably, it's the, the annual escalation factor was changed to 2% at the request of Mr. Leblank, Councilman Leblank, excuse me.
Yes, of course you can. Is that what you-
I also supplied, I think the whole council got it too, some comparative lease rates. And this is one of the higher ones in the state.
Is it still 25 years?
It is.
Okay.
That will be done during the actual negotiations on setting the contract.
Right.
But that's what we're looking at, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
So the 25 years needs to match the offer for the PPA. Those have to be in concert with each other, so.
We just, sometimes we know the answers to some of these questions, but we want to make sure that the public is well aware of what we are signing our names to. And we want there to be, we use the word transparency. We don't want it to get old and stale, but we really are committed to having an open government here and doing the best we can so the public understands what we're doing and why we're doing it. So thank you.
Yep. You've been very thorough, and we're looking forward to working together with everyone on building a first-class renewable energy project on your landfill.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Lima?
So I just wanted to say for those who weren't able to attend the meeting, so some of the highlights, I did have people come up to me afterwards and say, I say, "Go for it." That was the exact words. So it was overall positive. I think people just appreciated that they were consulted so early on. So I'd recommend if this council has any other projects that come up like this, maybe doing something similar again. The other thing that, the glare analysis, I would, I really want to push to have done, I know it's only for a few homes on Grandview Drive, I believe it is, off of Arnold Road. Those people were there. The specific, there's, I think it's one or two homes that are on there. And they specifically said as long as it's not shining into their homes, they were okay with it. So I think a glare analysis is necessary. I think most of the glare, based on what Mr. Mayman is saying, is going to face into the back of the hotels and BJs. But, so that was, that was a big piece of it. And where's my train of thought? But those were the big piece. I did have people come up to me positively, and the glare analysis is really specifically for those on that, there's a handful of homes on that drive. They did, and Mr. Mayman did say that if it, if it's the slightest issue, they have other projects in the past where they've put up screens on the fence of the property so the glare can't permeate through into their property. Because these, I believe the, did he leave? Oh, you're right there. I was looking back there. The panels are lower than their property, I think it was.
The property is lower than, most of the properties are lower than the landfill.
That's what it was.
Yeah. So the landfill is already up high.
Yeah.
There are two houses, I think, are most concerned, yeah.
And then can you just, I don't know if this question for you, if you detail how the negotiation process happens between the signing of the LOI and then the official lease? Like, how does that work from here?
That would be a question for Mr. Marshon.
My understanding is that first, we need to go through the land development process, through planning and zoning. And at the end of that, when they have their approvals and permits, and we go, then they'll come back to execute the lease, and we would address any issues at that point.
Okay.
We could do those two things in concert, actually.
Okay.
The letter of intent spells out the financial agreements that will be incorporated into the lease agreement.
Okay.
So it's basically an agreement of principle, and then we'll work on getting the full lease agreement to you.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Ludwig?
Just want to note that I believe the escalator was noted by multiple council people as a potential issue. So I'm glad that that was addressed and brought up. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, foyer's no nays, the motion passes. Mr. Wazika?
Thank you. Can I just ask if it could be signed tonight that way? What's doesn't have to come back and grab it tomorrow if it's that possible?
Who has to sign?
Mr. Marshon.
Okay, he's here. Okay, it will be done.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes. We're back to F3, the firework license. Mrs. Amatrono, do you have?
It is 76 Indian.
76.
So we don't have to make that amendment motion?
I think we do, because the agenda says 46. Oh, we don't? Okay.
That was just a type.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the application states 76, and that's what you're voting on.
Okay, so may I have? I'll make a motion to approve the firework license at 76 Indian.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Foyers, no nays. The firework license for application by John Studley for fireworks at 76 Indian Trail, September 5, 2021. 8 o'clock has been approved. Thank you. Item G2, awarding the following bid for the Department of Public Works, three 2023 Freightliner 108 SD dump trucks with body sanders and plows to ATG Tri-State Truck Center LLC in the amount of $485,148. This purchase is funded through the Department of Public Works operating budget. First of all, I'll take a motion and a second, and then we'll have a discussion. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. McGee, tell us more about these trucks.
Can you also do the little bit of background about how we got to this point tonight, to where we are?
Absolutely. This, several months ago, you folks approved the capital lease program, and we outlined seven vehicles that we were looking to replace. Three of them were the six-wheel dump trucks. And we went out to an RFP, and we got the bids that came in for this, had a bid opening. And recommendation is to the lowest qualified bidder, and it's not always the cheapest. We've had some issues with the two other companies that do not have adequate service. And the company that we're recommending, we've had business with them before, and they're the only company that's actually offering a 2023 rather than a 2022, because it's going to take so long, 11 to 12 months to put this all together. So, and that's why the recommendation is in front of you tonight, to go forward with the purchase, and we won't see those for a year, 11 months, actually.
Okay, question. Ms. Ludwig?
More comments. So this is a part of, sorry. This is more a comment. So this is part of the fleet management program that we already approved. I did send a question to Mr. DiAgostino, just asking, why do we have to individually approve the items when we've already approved the fleet management contract?
There's two different fleet. There's two different fleet management programs we're working with. This is not the enterprise one, which deals in small trucks and cars. This is our capital lease, which is separate, and because we're dealing with-
But that's already approved, right? But that's already approved, right?
Yeah, the enterprise one is approved, and we're operating that administratively.
So I'll take the "we" out, as in this council, but the town has already approved that one, right? So we got a guidance that we still need to approve the individual expenditures. I wasn't clear why we had to do, it just seemed like an extra step, as long as it's within, within the scope of the, the contract, and it was having some sort of sign-off between the director and making sure that that's in budget for what was scoped out. I wasn't clear on why we had to keep bringing these in.
Okay, so the difference was, is what was approved was a line of credit. You approved us getting a credit up to one point.
One point one seven five.
Thank you. Million dollars. And, but that wasn't approval to spend the money, and it wasn't approval for any specific vehicles. We had a list of concepts, but until we went out to bid and got the actual price amounts, now we're asking for approval to purchase. That's the difference.
And at the next town council meeting, I will be coming before you with two of the other additional pieces of equipment that are.
Bring it on.
We're, we need to get it, because it's not, we just can't get it quickly, so.
So are we talking about September thirteenth, you'll be back?
I will.
Okay, we'll put you on the agenda.
At the end again?
Well, you know what?
I'm always the last one, I mean.
Mr. McGee, if you were not here, there'd be no one else here, so.
True. I look forward to seeing you.
Ms. Calucci, Ms. Calucci is here, and there's someone behind you. Mr. Spearman is still here.
Mr. Bruce.
Yes, our faithful settlement is still here, so, thank you very much. I want to know, what are you going to do with these dump trucks that you were replacing?
Two of the dump trucks, we have no spare trucks at all. And one of the options we looked at last year was to actually rent dump trucks and plows during the snow season. We had numerous occasions where the trucks, the older trucks that we have, went down, and we had nothing to replace them with. So two of them will remain in the fleet as a spares, so that we have something to go back to and have the services provided that we expect. And one will be sold to put money back into the system.
So someone would really want to buy one of these dump trucks?
There are people that have farms, and people that do not, that cannot afford something newer, that would look at it. They're operational, they work every day, but they're not dependable. And that, once you get to a life of, you know, attempting to be twenty years old or more, it's beyond the functional lifespan of those vehicles. And you wouldn't drive a car that's that long and expect to be able to do, you know, important tasks with it. And we can't do that either. So that's some of the problems that you folks may have seen last year, where we had the garage filled with trucks, trying to get them back on the road in the middle of storms.
Okay, we, we understand that this is already in your budget. Is that correct?
Yes, under the capital lease, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Mrs. Lima?
Yeah, so my question was just, so I was going to ask about the plow situation. So this is three out of how many that you use for plows? Like, will, will we, this make a significant impact on plow operations?
Back in twenty sixteen, we were able to buy four with the infrastructure bond. This is the next, we haven't spent a dime on new trucks, other than the ten-wheeler, because that came in with a broken frame, and we had to replace that one two years ago. So this is making an impact. We still have a way to go yet, but we're still operating things that are, trucks that are fourteen to seventeen years old, that should be in a five to ten-year cycle, and we're not there yet. We just have stopped spending money on vehicles for a long time, and now we need time to pay the paper.
So are we getting back to that kind of schedule with this?
With your help, yes, we will.
So there's no, it's not like enterprise where it's guaranteed, we'll get a phone call. We have to be hands-on diligent about that, where the council is.
Yes.
And then, so you put emphasis on the word qualified bidder. So what made the other two, RI Truck and Freightliner, unqualified?
RI Truck, about four years ago, we actually had a problem with service that we had to send a wrecker down there to get the truck in a box with all the parts, because they just were not, taking three months and not doing the job. We found out from Hartford Freightliner, they do not have a mobile service. They would, anytime we had service, they would have to send a wrecker here and tow it down to Hartford, for wherever they need, they come back. We had no control as far as the time that would be down. Tri-State actually has a mobile repair station, and they will actually come here and fix it on-site.
Okay, all right, so it's about that kind of working relationship?
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions on this request?
And if, if I just might note, they're also the only ones that saw that it was going to be eleven, twelve months, and actually bid a twenty-three model, rather than everybody else bid a twenty-two model. So for the difference of seventeen hundred dollars per truck service and a newer truck, it's well worth the investment.
I just want more. So is there any way to have some sort of permanence with a leasing kind of mentality with these trucks? I mean, seems like it's just, that, that's, this is a huge expense to just be contingent upon whoever's, I don't know, I'm just, if we can do it with enterprise, it seemed, you know, I don't know why we couldn't.
So the big difference is enterprise has kind of a dominant role in the market, especially in the resale of
smaller.
Smaller, smaller vehicles. They buy them and sell them all the time, they turn them over all the time. When you're dealing with heavy trucks like this, this is not the kind of thing that people rent often or use often or turn over often. And like Mr. McGee was saying, if we could get to a five to ten-year turnover with these vehicles, we would maintain an optimal fleet with these sized vehicles. And what we're really proposing to do is manage that fleet ourselves, but it's contingent on the support of the taxpayers and the town council to fund that program at that level. With enterprise fleet management, the model is different because there's so many more of these smaller vehicles, they're more affordable, and because the way we've been running our feet fleet into the ground, we're going to be saving on the maintenance costs to offset the lease costs. And rather than paying cash out of pocket for the full price of the vehicle, we're only leasing a piece of it for the first three years and then selling it. So i- it's just a different model. But with, and the other way to think about it, the capital lease program is really a way to finance that expense. So instead of purchasing the entire cost of the vehicle with cash, we're financing it and keeping that cost down in the same way we would be with enterprise.
Okay.
And also, one of the things is, by modernizing the fleet, we'd be spending less on repair parts and not have to ask for additional manpower for the mechanics to keep up with all the breakdowns. So this will help save our costs in the future also.
Why does it take so long?
Supply chain is broken.
Right.
So it's just.
Even before, it was, it was anywhere from five to seven months. And now it's just one company is saying it's fourteen months, you know, in AutoCar and then, you know, in other companies. But that's the best. Everybody was pretty consistent with eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen months. ATG Tri-State was eleven months.
Apparently, it is a break in the supply chain of microchips.
Well, that, and steel.
And steel, yes. Okay, we've had a motion and a second to approve the resolution that appears on our packet page fifty-eight to eighty-three. Roll call, vote. Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, foyer's no nays, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, ladies. Have a good day.
Thank you. The next item on our, on our agenda is G three, appointment of one member to the sewer subcommittee. First of all, I'd like to mention that our current member, Councilwoman Ms. Ludwig, has served on the sewer subcommittee, and she has been a very proactive member of the committee. She's always challenging the committee and challenging us so that that group does a very top-notch dynamite job in making recommendations to the council. The council wishes to thank her for her service. Thank you so much, Ms. Ludwig. She is now busy with the Economic Development Commission, so her unexpired seat as a member is available. This evening, I am appointing Mrs. Hillary Lima to this position. The resolution is on page eighty-three. May I have a motion to appoint Mrs. Lima to the unexpired term of her predecessor?
Do we need a motion? Because this is president appointed.
Yeah, it is on the resolution, so we have one here in our docket to vote.
I'll make the motion to appoint Hillary.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Mrs. Lima?
Abstention.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
I'll say, I don't know why we're, why we're voting on a president-appointed position, but yes.
We usually don't, but it's in our packet, so I want to make sure that I cover all the bases.
Okay.
Otherwise, maybe she won't show up at the first meeting.
Okay, she better.
There's no harm in redundancy.
No, there is no harm in redundancy. I, I will like to vote so that we have three votes, so we can say it's approved.
We can, Hillary.
Okay. There is one abstention, three yays, no nays, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Lima. Okay, comment?
Um, yes, so I did just want to thank all of the sewer subcommittee members, past and present, who helped give me background, information, discussion, and were able to help along the way. I feel like we've, you know, really pushed that recent group with the addition of a new member just a month or two ago, with Ben, Mr. Marshon coming in, and Mr. Wazika leaving. And so the group, the group is at a point right now that they're literally about to review what parts of the ordinance we want to make changes to. So I will be sending my recommendations to councilperson Lima, and they will continue that good work on the sewer subcommittee. Thank you.
Can we remind her of when her first meeting is?
Not, not until the second Wednesday in September.
Second Wednesday in September. Okay, we're open now for public comment. Is there anyone in, in the public who is sitting here with us this evening? Or anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment? Mrs. Spear, Mr. Spearman?
Hello, I'm the Recreation.
Excuse me, please state your name and address.
Name is James Mannan, thirty-two more. I think you better check on this one, because this land, this property, all left to the town, heated to the town, so recreational youth, the people on the town, not to make profits on the youth league that you. You mentioned.
Not to make profits off of our own Coventry youth leagues, but there are club teams looking for space that are not Coventry teams.
They should not have use over Coventry.
Oh, no, no, but I think if there's use available, it's a wonderful way to.
I've been Coventry since nineteen sixty-eight, a long time. Here, the build, even the community setup itself was built by everybody paying a dollar, sending blocks to build that building. But what you should check, because the Rice family left it for specific reasons. You can only use it for that, and if it was a pain.
I, I understand what Mr. Spearman is saying, is that it's really not a question of policy for the council, but it's sort of like a question of title that has to be adhered to by those who gifted the property to the town. And there are certain covenants that might apply, and he's just alerting us to that. And I thank you, Mr. Spearman, for that.
We used to have, I don't know, do we remember those, but I don't know how long you folks have been living in town.
Not as long as you.
There hasn't been one here since I've been here.
Forty years, so. I hate to say, the Recreation Committee, I was on it before. There's been about ten of them over the years. They're good, but there's independent leagues that want to pay a lot of money to use the field. My, I'm president of Bayou. We now have maybe four thousand dollars kitty. These other leagues pay, it's baseball teams out there that people are paying five or six thousand dollars a year for their kids to play. We can't afford that. I had a sign-up Saturday for baseball. I had twisted pizza, and the lady hit my collar while I was there. The, we have people that can't afford to pay. And Little League, Yos softball, we have thought that. But it's not, and they, and other leagues started coming in, because they can't get the weather. They'll have to worry, they come up here. I just be cautious what you do.
Yes, I appreciate.
Especially on that, because all them days, one they could have there, so that was a community.
Sure. That, that'll be examined, and I appreciate your historical knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spearman. Are there any other comments?
Mrs. Shockley?
No, I, I think he makes an excellent point, and I think Coventry teams should always be the first represented at Coventry fields.
Thank you. All right, any members of the public who are on Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. How many do we still have on? Nine. Any members of the public who would like to make a comment? I don't see any members of the public who would like to make a comment. Thank you. I hope you enjoyed attending our meeting this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn at nine oh five?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, vote. Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, foyer's no nays, the motion passes. The meeting is adjourned at nine oh five. That is a record for us this evening.